Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for coming tonight. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Gary. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Public comment?
I like to speak on the happy half of the calendar as an athletic director. I know that there's a tight loose one out there and I know who the process was for a goal of possibly teachers and ultimately make the last decision. I have compiled a list of the past five years and that first week in January, we start off playing basketball right away. And we have dance right away and we had, in fact, this year we even had junior high knowledge will have a meet on January 4th. So with the whole idea that if we don't go back to school till later in January, we have a longer Christmas break, such as the loose calendar, it will be, to me, not as efficient. We have 118 kids in winter sports and that is seven through, or six through 12, or the 17 through 12. So at this point, I'm just seeing that, you know, as I went through, one year it was we had games on the 2nd of January. Usually it's the 5th, the 6th, the 4th, and by not having a tight calendar, we would have this break, but everybody would still be here, you know, and coaches all know that trying to play on a day when we don't have school is difficult anyway. To have practices, the gyms would be full. There's just this aspect that this family time, I don't know, would necessarily be achieved at that point, where I would see it achieved more likely in the early summer. So that is my opinion as an athletic director. It means my life a lot easier if we have school. That's known and stuff. The other thing is that calendar that we're looking at to approve, that's also the year that we will be going on a DC trip again, which means basketball and everything that's, will start a week later. So that combines my calendar and then if you take the week in January, trying to get 26 games within, you know, I try to respect days that are off and usually I can't. So as you can look at this year's calendar, it's nuts. So my recommendation as an athletic director and the scheduling, which is chaos, is that we stay with a tight calendar, just for that benefit.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, consent items. We have a motion to approve the consent items. Motion by Joe. Second. Second by Ron. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion items. School calendars. Is he ready?
The last year, we approved two years of calendars in one fell swoop. So that when we're approving a calendar, we will always just be for not the next year, but the year after that. So that we're, it helps with planning and a lot of schools are doing that two-year calendar cycle now. So we're looking at the 2018-19 school calendar. There's the loose calendars about which Mrs. Shuddy was talking were created by a small group of teachers. However, they needed to have all the teachers weigh in on both options. I created the tight option, looking at what we are doing currently. And the teachers were told that, I told the two co-presidents that I needed to know their vote by 4 o'clock today to bring it back to this meeting. And I didn't receive anything from them. We're not going to be voting on it yet, so they still can tell me what their vote is. But I was hoping by this morning meeting to tell you and I forgot to reach out to them. And then I looked for the email now after the policy committee and it's not there. Does anyone have any questions about the calendars for the 18-19?
I think we should think about asking parents and, I mean, and the kids too, what their opinion is. And I just know my kids, I mean, they work so hard, it's just nice to have a break. And to Lisa's point, I mean, this year, there's basketball practice every single day, no break. They got like one day off and there were games, it's actually kind of crazy. But, I mean, these kids need a break. I personally am more in favor of a looser calendar so that we could go on a family vacation sometime other than the summer and not have to pull the kids out of school. The other comment is that when I read the MNBA calendar, I was really excited and then I realized it was MNBA 1. You know, all of our half-days are on Wednesdays and it would just, and I brought this up every year, but from a parent perspective, if we were to put those on Fridays, the parents could have the opportunity to go away and have a long weekend or to do something instead of always having them on Wednesdays. And, you know, I just don't understand the purpose. MNBA's are on Fridays, or if they have a day off, they tend to be on Mondays. But I think for the most part, all of the half-days for ours are on Wednesdays.
I like the tight schedule. I'm a parent too, I like the tight schedule. It's my preference, my kids' preference too, so.
And the Wednesday historically, it was requested several years ago that we go with Wednesdays. And so that's just kind of been where we put the half-days for the mid-quarter. And that's where we put the half-days for QCOM.
Well, and I'm just one person, Joe's just one person. I'm just wondering, you know, out of all, I mean, 99% of them might agree with Joe. I might be the only one that thinks different. It might be the opposite, you know, and if there's an overwhelming support by parents and kids for one of the calendars. I know we have the teacher input and I greatly appreciate that, but it would be interesting to, at some point in time, get the parents and kids input as well, if we can easily, if it's something we can easily do. If we can just post them out there and people can do a survey, Survey Monkey or something, I don't know. Vote on the website, whatever. But I would be interested to hear. I mean, it's not a huge difference. We're not getting a week-long spring break in either one, right?
No.
Which I would love, but, you know.
I think, you know, getting the community or a parent input and kids' input is important and it goes along with what I've been saying we need to do more of. Our world's best workforce is get the voice of our community and parents. So it would seem like a survey or something. When parent-teacher conferences are held in the fall or in the spring, it's a good time to be thinking about when it's, you know, if you ask them to think about a calendar a year from now, they're just not. But if they're thinking about, you know, what about the current calendar could be different that would be better, they could weigh in on it better. I'd also like to hear from teachers or from educators, educationally what's better. Because my sense is having the breaks in the middle of the week is probably educationally better on Friday or Monday. But that's my sense coming from where I come from, my world.
I do think that's a good idea to revisit it though and just see if they still agree on Wednesdays. I agree with Mimi on the weekend and just the convenience of it.
So you don't know the particular reason why it's on Wednesday, huh?
Well, it was originally moved to Wednesdays for, when we used to have them on, we had some on Fridays. We had them spread, we used to put the mid-quarter wherever the mid-quarter fell. And so sometimes it was mathematically Monday, sometimes it was a Thursday. And so it made sense to go with a date that was consistent, with a day of the week that was consistent. And also, it's really hard to have a half a day on a Friday because the kids are really squirrely. It's hard to have that half a day on a Monday because it feels like you're just getting into the swing of things and then you stop again. And so that's why we went with Wednesdays because it was more educationally, it felt more educationally sound.
So back to this, are the teachers in favor of the tight week, right?
Well, no, I don't know what they, I, I, I. Athletic director is, and she is speaking.
Folks, we need to speak one at a time and some members of the audience can't hear, so. I'm just saying, I just.
Right, that's fine.
Okay.
So you were saying, Joe?
So the way I get this, the facts are that the athletic director is the only one that wants a tight schedule that we know of right now.
That we know of.
Right. We haven't done a study or survey on anything.
The teachers did have a vote, but I have not yet been given the results of that vote.
And we're not voting on it tonight, we're just taking on the discussion.
Right, because you need to see it at least one time before you vote on it next time.
Got it, I understand.
On a survey of the parents, especially on the students, is that achievable through the email? Like we get our updates or is that something that's sent home or at parent-teacher conferences? What do you think's the most?
That's something, needs to be discussed. Results on surveys are usually limited and disappointing. So you have to find a way to deliver it, that you get something that feels, that you can capture more. That's why I said maybe at conferences, but I don't even know what percentage of our parents show up for various conferences.
It's not very high in high school.
Yeah, so.
Elementary is almost 100%.
Yeah.
Right.
Elementary is still much different.
But.
And the teacher's opinion is critical, that's why.
I guess I'm wondering how you put a survey out so that people understand that they're just trying to tighten the schedule.
You just ask them when they want.
Yeah.
How long do you want the school year to go and how big a spring break or?
Make it as cut and dry as possible.
Yeah, don't get into the technicalities, just sort of look for what they wish they had.
Because I know we've talked about it in the past and a lot of people want school to end on this day. They don't want it to go into the middle of June. They want it to be done first week if possible, then it may be better type of thing. So a lot of times they look at it like, compress it as much as possible, get them through it, let them go.
I didn't even know what to go through the middle of June.
Oh.
Well.
Some schools.
Some schools.
To get the 174 contact days in, if you, if we wanted to have two weeks at Christmas and a week at Easter, we would be going until June 15.
We could do that, but then.
Or have a longer school day.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, there are other ways.
That was brought up in discussion. But the Wednesday, I think.
There used to be some law though that you couldn't, you had to end by Labor Day or?
I guess it started.
Can't start till Labor Day.
Can't start, we can't start until after Labor Day.
Okay, so that's at the end of the.
Right, that's the only stipulation.
Are either of these proposed calendars, have they correctly looked at spring break corrections? They got the dates right?
Yes.
Okay, just asking.
Yep.
Actually, when you said that originally the break was at the end of the quarter, I think that makes pretty good sense. But that's a shifting day for workshops, but I, end of quarter?
Oh, no, the workshop days are still for the onsite. The workshop days are at the end of the quarter. The half-days or the curriculum days, those are typically at mid-quarter. And so that's, mid-quarter is the one where we used to do it mathematically, but.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yep, and I might have misspoken, so.
I mean, my thoughts along with others is, I mean, if you're going to go a half-day, Friday would be a good one for that? Just because I would think it'd be tough for Mondays.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. But again, that's just.
As far as parents and parents and kids might like the Friday half-day and educators probably don't see much merit. You're not a half-day on Friday.
Yeah, because on a Monday, I just, that would be not good, just my thoughts.
I can see the Fridays not being good either.
And that's why we knew Monday and Friday weren't working as well, so we went with Wednesdays.
It seemed like we talked about it years ago about why Wednesday, it was some other, and it may have been like Mike Lee said, academically that was the most. I'd like to see with the teachers, what you get back from them. And then we can revisit it. And then it's our survey, I mean, I don't think that's a bad idea. But again, how do we capture enough people to make it where, you know, Mimi said Survey Monkey? If that's something we could do with the parents. The kids, you know, I don't know, but the parents, I think.
Doesn't Infinite Campus have a tool?
Not that I know of. It's got a school messenger tool.
Mrs. Shuddy's had one.
No.
The website has a survey tool. Our school's today.
But that's not limited to, it's not like invitation. Like Ron could vote 50 times, right, and he's not a parent.
He was.
Where Infinite Campus has a, like, the right list of people, right, that's why.
I will, I will say that the, is it daily briefing or we get each day by?
The announcements.
Yeah.
That's fantastic. You know, I mean, it really gets you in the school and what everyone's up to, where kids are needed to be, parents, volunteers. So I don't know, I'm sure a lot of parents do, you know, are reading those and.
We could send, it would be easy to create a Survey Monkey with.
Right, it could be a line item in there.
Right. And send it out as a link in the announcements.
I mean, I also, what percentage of terms they get that everyone? Nice tool.
It's a, and there are some, it would not.
Ron probably gets those too.
Ron probably gets those too.
He does.
There's a lot, there's a lot of non-parents that get those. There's a lot of alumni parents that get them because even though their children are not in the school anymore, they still want to be informed of what's going on here, which I have no problem with.
By the way, again, that's a small percentage, I'm assuming.
Well, the survey could try to capture the demographics of without, right, you could just say, you're a parent of a.
Yeah.
How many kids do you have in the district?
Yeah. I mean, and then you've got some.
Yeah.
And everybody can respond.
Well, actually, if the kids get, some of the kids get the announcements emailed to them as well. So we could have kids filling out the survey too and the students. We have the button that says, yes, I'm a student.
Well, I don't think we're in a rush to do it, so let's put that together and see what we come up with. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Joe? Good? Gary?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, moving right along. Board and leadership planning session.
We talked about having this planning session, but then the questions there. I sent out the survey to the board and the leadership team to try to see if there are some commonalities. And found that the major commonality is that most people didn't fill out the survey. The majority of people didn't fill out the survey. Of the surveys that were turned back in, it was 50% on this side, 50% over here, as far as every answer. And so right now, I am not opposed to planning a meeting, I'm not opposed to meeting at all. I don't want anyone to think of that, I am opposed to it. However, if I'm going to plan a meeting, I need to know why we're meeting, what needs to be on the agenda, what is the goal of meeting?
I agree.
If the meeting is to do strategic planning, are we going to start with the premise that we already have a vision, mission, and core values that are good and we're just going to prevent, do the visioning from there? And at what level are we doing the visioning from there? Is this a five-year plan? If we're going to get into the weeds, then it's, we'll need to get more people involved than just those two groups. If, if the goal is to come up with a brand-new vision, mission, and core knowledge, and core values, that's a totally different take. And so right now, I just need to know.
Well, first of all, if the majority of us didn't fill it out, what are your feelings on that? I mean, to me, that says they don't want to do it, or they didn't fill it out.
Or they didn't realize that with the blue line in the superintendent update was a link or they didn't open up the superintendent update because they didn't have time.
We can change lots of things, yeah. But they did take an approach to filling it out, right?
Right, they did fill it out. And there were, of the five people that filled it out, that means seven people didn't fill it out. Of the seven that didn't fill it out, there might be seven reasons why it didn't get filled out. So I can't assume anything.
Perfect. I would say if you sent it out as a single item and not end with stuff and made a bullet, just a statement, this is what we're looking at doing, you know, and saying what you just said, you know, I don't want to have a meeting, I want to know where we want to be at with this. Because my opinion on how, or how deep we need to get into it will probably be different than Gary's or Mike Lee's, you know, but we need to start somewhere. Again, I don't think we need to have a meeting, just have a meeting, but we need to start something with this plan. We've been talking about it forever.
Well, maybe we could just take a voice vote. I mean, people who didn't, who didn't fill it out and don't want to have the meeting can say, I'm not interested in a meeting. I mean, maybe we can even figure out if I'm interested in a meeting.
Mike Lee says she is.
I would be too.
I'm in, I'm in. Joe?
I want to know the benefits and the positive and negative, like Crin was saying, what am I getting out of this meeting?
No, that's, that's fine. Ron?
I don't like going to meetings.
Yeah, I'm in. I see it as a way of making sure that the administration and the board are all on the same page. That's what I'm trying to.
So that's a, that's a different, that's a different veer than actual strategic planning.
No, it isn't.
I'm just, so we're saying, there's a need for a meeting, we haven't decided the purpose yet, but everybody has a different, or may have different reasons for, or different tacks.
Well, we have to know where we all stand before we can go anyplace.
There's no strategic planning session that's been successful that doesn't have everybody on the same page. I mean, that's a result of strategic planning. He's not saying we're going off track, it's just, it's going to happen. I mean, we have to get together and talk. Right now, we're all going all these different directions. We all need to go the same direction and have the same goals.
This is true.
And we won't ever get to there if we don't actually sit down and have a meeting. We can do surveys left and right and push it off till a new board member joins and, you know, we have to sit down and have a meeting.
I'm ready. Put down a calendar.
Why don't you talk about this?
Yes.
Well, how about your other questions about core values, mission, statement and all that? I mean, does everybody feel we have to revisit those or can we just assume those are okay and?
As I said, I'm not assuming anything, so you can.
Right, that's why I'm asking the board.
I'm all right with them. I would like to start with the strengths, with the SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, and go from there. I think that's the first step. Because I'm fine, I don't, we could spend six sessions analyzing our values and mission and vision and I don't think we're going to change them much.
Right. Okay.
How about everybody else, Ron?
I'd go for the SWOT team.
Analysis, that team.
I'll go for it. I'm open. It's a place to start. Gary?
But you're okay with the, the question was the vision, mission, core values? Are you good with those?
Yeah.
I'm okay with vision, mission, and core values. Have been since day one, still want to meet.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so I will.
So I'll put it together.
I was thinking, since we meet on Thursdays, we probably all have Thursdays open if we just went the opposite week of a meeting. Okay, so I'm going to go out on a limb and say that might work best in our calendars.
So next Thursday?
Isn't, I mean, is a decision to be made before that meeting, who should be at the meeting?
What's the agenda?
Is this just the board and leadership to start?
Or is this just the board? Is this just a target, like a special board meeting of just board and superintendent to figure out what we're going to do?
Well, what say you? And that's up to you guys. You guys make your decision and then I will, I will plan it and I will run with it.
Well, I, I'm going to push back a little bit. What, I mean, I think we're agreeable if you would tell us what you think is best. I mean, I expect this to be successful and part of the reason it's going to be successful is because you're leading it. And so I'd like you to take charge and make the suggestion and what you think is best. I mean, we all have day jobs and I don't know the ins and outs of the school. So, I mean, I can talk about what I think the strengths of a school are and the weaknesses, but what I say is going to be different than the administration and different than you. You have much more insert, obviously, than all of us. So if you think it's best we meet individually, then let's do it. If you think it's best we meet with the administration, then let's do it. I'm not going to get upset if you make a decision, as long as it progresses. As long as we are going to a meeting with the whole community and didn't know it. As long as we, you keep us up to date, I mean, just keep the ball rolling.
But if you want, if you want it to be true strategic planning as far as like with vision, mission, core values, the strategic direction with the world's best workforce and that whole thing.
No world's best workforce.
That world's best workforce has to be part of a strategic plan.
It'll be the result. I don't want to, I want to just do the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities.
Just keep going.
Keep it simple and then you can plug the stuff in the world's best workforce document. You can, we can talk about it later, but I don't want that to be the driving factor of the.
I say we have a meeting with the leadership team involved and start from there.
What's the meeting going to be about?
But we have to come up with a plan. I don't think you can, Crin, I don't think you can.
If we can start it next week on Thursday, I don't see that happening until you come up. We have to sit down and come up with a.
Mike Lee, tell me what this is going to be about.
I don't, I think, I would like to hear from everybody about what they envision it being about. I've heard from Mimi, I mean, and I am okay with vision, mission, and core values. However, I do not, I'm not interested in doing a SWOT analysis.
That's fine.
I am more interested in, I am more interested in deciding where we're going to put our priorities. Are we going to?
Well, that leads to that. So I've led strategic planning for schools in the past, for various charter schools. And you start with mission, vision, values, you get through that. You do the SWOT analysis, you do your strengths, your weaknesses, and you look at those. And typically, your weaknesses focus in on those. They, some of those, from both sides, become opportunities and then you have your threats.
I get it.
And then the opportunities is where we say, we're going to be the best STEAM school ever. Or I don't, I don't know what the opportunity is, but then that's where we get into the nitty-gritty of, these are our goals in there and how we're going to execute it.
I think it would do us no harm to revisit our last SWOT analysis, which wasn't all that long ago. We had, we conducted a SWOT analysis. We did, we didn't do it as a group, it was done individually. I've got the documents, I can send them around. It was each of us. I don't know that we ever met and went forward with that, but we did it, we've done it in the past.
I don't even remember it, so it'd be great if you'd send it.
And they may have changed, but, but to me, we did that and then it's like, let's prioritize and get on that direction. That's where I'm at.
But they, I don't know when we did that, I can't even remember it, but they could be quite different now too.
No, but it's a starting point.
Right, yeah, use it.
I mean, you use it to start and that's, can be the focus of the meeting is to take the past, what we came up with, and then go from there. And if you feel, Crin, that it's just necessarily for the board to do it, then we'll just have the board do it. What's my feeling, you know?
No, I think we need leadership for a SWOT analysis.
I would rather have everybody.
Principles and leadership. I do think we need principals and leadership.
You want to have the the board leadership planning session be a SWOT analysis with a board and leadership team?
Correct. So what are the metrics used to identify strengths and weaknesses?
Are you talking about reviewing what SWOT analysis we did before?
We're going to start with.
It's when Jean was here. I have to go look at it. Yeah.
Maybe we just need to review that and.
But they might have changed.
Make sure that we all know what our vision, mission, and core values are. I mean, Josh has never been through that.
That's true. That would be good.
Look at that before we meet?
No, meet to do it. It's like Mimi, Mimi's, it's a valid point, no matter how long. If it was done more than five years ago, it's it's kind of wasting time. We need to start from where we are, not go back to wherever we perceived we were, but my perception is it's not going to change that much, I think, if I look at it, because I've been waiting for us to act on some of that.
So why don't you?
Well, let's all look at it before the meeting. We can decide if not to.
Send it to Ann, and she can distribute it.
Okay. Are we still planning on meeting next Thursday, then?
I don't think that we can, personally, but.
Why? Seems pretty quick.
It's a week away.
Well, if you guys are up for it, I'll I'll be here.
Who facilitates that? We're going to have an outside facilitator? Are we going to do it ourselves? We going to let Quinn do it?
Quinn?
I've done a bunch of SWOT analysis things before. But then if I'm facilitating, that means I'm not participating.
That's right. That's exactly right.
I can facilitate, too. Maybe we can swap in and out based on what we're talking about or whatever. A swap, a swap. Swap of the swap.
Are you guys all up for next Thursday? Mimi?
I am. Let's go.
Ron?
Sure.
Joe?
Yep.
Mike Lee? Okay. So it'd be said.
All you had to do was say it was possible.
At time, six.
Yep.
And in the same location, which means it needs to be posted, because it's not a board meeting, but they are all going to be here, so. Over to you, Ron.
Okay. Any other comments on it before we move on? Okay. Jim, banner payment.
The Booster Club did meet and last night, and they voted to pay the bill in full, so we thank them for that. However, from this incident, I am going to be requesting that as a board and a school, we change some of our procedures in the future. If a group wants to donate, donate an item, or let's say it's a batting cage, or donate, make a donation of an item to the school, we will need to have cash in hand before we order it. And then if there, we'll have to ask that group at that time, when they said that they were going to pay, if there are incidentals, whether or not that group would be willing to pay for the incidentals that might be incurred after ordering such a shipping installation. There might be some talk in the community about that, so that's why I wanted to bring it up in the board.
So you think we ought to have a policy?
It would not be a policy, it would be a procedure. In fact, we already discussed it in the policy committee tonight.
Okay, just want to make sure.
This is, this is a procedural change, not a policy change.
So if we have somebody that wants to donate something to the school, there would be a procedure to make sure that whoever that is, that there's a clear understanding of what's coming to the school and what will and will not be covered.
Right, and when it will be ordered and.
Makes sense.
Well, thank you.
So that being said.
Mm-hmm.
I believe a thank you would be in order for.
Absolutely. Yes, the Booster Club did provide a very generous donation of, it ended up being $6,399 for the banners that are hanging in our gym.
Well, tell them thank you. We appreciate it.
And the chairman of the Booster Club is here.
Thank you, chairman.
Maybe Ella can get a picture afterwards.
Tony.
Tony, actually, yeah.
It's a banner, maybe.
Okay, anything else on that? Anybody have anything else you think? A policy committee update?
Which one of you wants to take that?
Go ahead, Ron.
I'll put it on there. Okay, our policy on naming rights and memorials, we are going to draft up a policy for the board to consider, and we will have that at the next board, regular board. And the board will get it a little beforehand, so you can weigh in on it, and we'll discuss it. It'll be just like any other policy, you know, we have a first reading, second reading, maybe a third reading, depending on how it goes. Is that enough, Sid?
Anything else?
A logo policy we discussed.
Oh, yeah, we did discuss, it was on the agenda to discuss our logo policy, and after a long discussion, I don't think we are going to have any.
We decided that putting a policy in place wouldn't prevent perceived concerns by not having the policy. It wouldn't stop anything, it wouldn't, it just was, we either need more information. Mr. Chair, if you were requesting that we develop this policy, maybe there's some information that at least me or others are not aware of, but we discussed it fully and just felt like, even if we develop a policy, it is the only way, if somebody uses your logo without your permission, what recourse do you have other than to sue them? I mean, it didn't seem that having a policy was going to stop anything. The principals are usually aware when a group is seeking to do something on behalf of the students, and so there is a communication line there, and we just, isn't that kind of low?
And I did ask all the other superintendents in Southeast Minnesota, and no one has a policy. Two of the schools have their policies copyrighted, and there's a whole bunch of schools that have their school.
Their logo.
Logos, their logos copyrighted. There are a bunch of schools that have their logo board approved, and then most of us are in the, nothing's board approved, nothing's really written down. And there is one school that said, if we develop a policy, let them have it, because they're doing it, too. So that's, that's what I.
Well, they know what's going on. I was just, like I said, my concern was that somebody was, you know, that there's not enough communication on what's being done with it, you know, or what's not. I mean, I know a couple of years ago, we had kids making T-shirts with stuff on them that were being sold in the school. You know, there was questionables about that, you know, why, why was that allowed, and who did it get done? You know, there shouldn't be, you know, Gary shouldn't be making T-shirts at his house and selling them at the school of kids without the school board knowing about it, is what I'm saying. So I think something like that.
Well, the school board, the principal.
First of all, I mean, the administration needs to know that that's being done and what's the money being utilized for. It shouldn't be that someone can just do it randomly and put our stuff on it without somebody knowing.
Yeah, as Todd said, he's usually as aware of everything.
He's supposed to be aware.
Supposed to be. I know there was an incident that there was kind of a, but anyway, it's passed, so I'm just saying, I think if Todd or the administration knows about it and they're controlling it, that's fine. So just, just throwing it out there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That it? Okay, MSBA updates?
Let's see, we had updates from Mike Lee and Ron last time, so maybe do you have something you'd like to?
Yeah, I didn't bring my notes, but I've been, it's been a few weeks since we were up there. There's a couple of things that have stuck in my mind, so I'm not going to tell you all the sessions I've had, because some of them I didn't really get much out of, but the one that was most interesting was the session where the students got to talk, and so the the school board members and the, could ask them questions, and some of what they said was, I think, really good takeaways. And first of all, some of the schools that were up there, a lot of the kids, they were, they were, said, if you had unlimited funding, what, what one change would you make in your school? And it was interesting, because some of the kids said they wanted musical instruments and band, you know, they wanted things that our kids have. So I'm really happy we have some of those arts in our school, because I think some of those inner, like, they were, they were charter schools and some smaller schools, and they just kind of had lost their focus on the arts, and the kids were really missing that. But what one of the kids said, who seemed to be extremely wise, and I don't, it's just something for us to think about, I don't know if it's an issue here in Houston or not, but she said in her school, she would get rid of the school counselor title, and because it's two roles, she would make it be an academic advisor and then more of a therapist sort of title. The one role is to work with the kids and figure out what classes they should be taking, what do they want to do for college, what are they going to do after school, are they on the right track and really spend that time working with them? And the other would be asking them, how are you feeling? Are you stressed, you know, or if a kid has an issue, can come in and talk to them? And she said, if she had her way, there'd be a certain ratio, and she'd have, you know, so many of these academic advisors per kids, and because she, in her school, she found that the kids that really needed, like, some help, and either way, they weren't able to get it, because their school counselors were just way too busy trying to fulfill both roles. So I thought that was really interesting. The other thing that was a good takeaway, there was a lot of discussion about, from board members, about how to get information from the kids and this and that, and they pretty much all had a student school board rep. But the one school, and I can't tell you the name of it right off the top of my head, but they have a, one day in March, I think they said, where they buy sub sandwiches, and the school board and their student council have a workshop, where basically, they get together, eat dinner, and then the school board can ask the kids whatever questions they want. And and he said that it's just one of the, it was the head of the Minnesota Honor Society or National Honor Society, he's involved with that, and he said that that's one of the most powerful things that the school board does in the year, is to have this meeting with their student council, because the kids can really raise, it's a, it's a safe environment for them to raise concerns or questions, and the school board members to ask the questions that they want to ask, and they just do it, and they have a student school board rep, but that's their one day for the whole student council to be able to speak up. So I thought that was interesting. So I think that's, you know, I went to some technology sessions and various different things, but listening to the kids, I think, is the most powerful, to hear, you know, what we can do to improve our school. So, so anyway, those are my two ideas that, or two thoughts to bring back. And it was a fun conference, by the way.
I saw pictures.
And I, I went to a session on conducting investigations, riveting, but no, it was, it was very good information, and so it's, I want to make sure that if and when we have to conduct investigations, we're, we're doing it in a way that is, it provides documentation necessary and also provides the clarity to those people that might be filing a complaint. I also went to another one on beyond the flipped classroom, and it was on what Farmington is doing. And they really have, at first, I was going to say that they had decided to think outside of the box as far as what education should be, but they're so far out of it, I don't know if they know where the box is anymore. But it, it really is taking that individualized learning to a really fascinating level. But it would, it would require an entire paradigm shift as far as the kids taking more ownership of their own learning, and the teachers letting go of lecture, and, and really, instead of being a sage on the stage, becoming that kind of coach on the side. And but that was just, listening to that one was just fascinating.
How, how is how they presented that different from what MNVA does?
MNVA is school in a non-traditional venue, but it's still traditional education. The students have their coursework, they have their daily plan. It's, MNVA is traditional school in a non-traditional way.
But the instructors are not the sage on the stage, they're there in class connects, they're there to keep them on track and to.
Coach them.
To coach them, but they're not delivering the information, right, in the same way?
But if you listen to the class connect, a class connect sounds very similar to the instruction in a, in one of our classrooms here.
Okay, I, so when I first got on the board, I, a teacher was kind enough to let me sit in on a class connects, and that's not the way that one was done. So I made the assumption that all the class connects are that way, because it was.
Well, and from one classroom to the next, here.
Is different.
Is different.
So.
Yeah.
I think those class connects should be more not delivering. If the kids wait until a class connects, I'll wait to learn what I'm, I'll wait to hear what I'm supposed to know. That's not particularly advancing their education.
So what's the content delivery mechanism at Farmington?
They have Schoology. So all the kids have, all the kids have a device. Schoology is like Blackboard, G2L, that's their learner management system, and all the, the teachers have put the pacing there, and so let's say, the teacher looks at the class and says, okay, today, we're going to cover this, oh, there's only five of you that really need this, so you five need to come to class, the other 17 of you, you know where to go, and so then the other 17, instead of going to the class that hour, are in the commons area, or they're in the media center, and they're on their computers, logging on and doing the coursework in the, in the learner management system. So it's, is it something we could do next year? Absolutely not.
So how were their test scores and everything?
Their test scores actually went down a little bit. But they, they, anytime you're going to make a really fundamental change, there's going to be a dip. They're hoping that there's going to be an increase now.
How long have they been doing it?
This is year two.
So they don't have enough to do that yet?
I said in some, not at the MSBA conference, but some place, Byron's whole math department flipped their math, and they saw a dip in scores, but then they saw the scores significantly coming up, and I don't know where they are now.
They're a little revenge school.
Yeah, so, but, but they, they took a lot of staff development dollars, they took a lot of, teachers in that department made a commitment to go develop all these materials and to completely flip that in a traditional school, in a department rather than school-wide, and it was met with good success.
So not next year, but maybe the year after, Quinn, is what you're saying?
What I'm, what I'm saying is what I, I would really like to, if we're going to really look at visioning, if we're really going to look at what kids need, we need to be willing to have kind of those conversations about whole paradigm shifts. We've got to be willing to say, okay, what, what, what training and get the teachers in and the entire staff and the parents, because. in and, and the entire staff and the parents because if we say your only homework is going online and then watching, you know, doing this instructional piece and not homework, that's going to look very different for parents, it's going to look very different for students. And then it's, the, the homework becomes schoolwork. And so it's, if, if we want to do that, it, it's going to take a lot of people kind of digging in and seeing what we can build. I think we can, but we all have to be on the same page.
So anything else? Anything else tonight? You been?
Well, I mean, yeah, I guess I was sitting here kind of, the other sessions that I went to was Lucrecent and their technology, it was interesting. Their Chromebooks, they have a deal with Best Buy where you get, like, you just go to Best Buy and buy them and they give you a hundred dollars, like, the school gives the kid a hundred dollars. Yeah, so they can buy the standard one or they can choose to buy a different one and then they get it, like, they get two every so many years, they get a credit for another one. But they actually have like a, almost like a Geek Squad kiosk in their school, run, it's staffed by kids. I mean, they have a staff person there, but kids are learning how to do all that stuff too, which is kind of cool. And the other one I went to was, I can't remember the name of the school district, but it was on the south side and they just did a big strategic plan and did like a six million dollar addition, no, excuse me, sixty-five million, some huge number addition to their school and did all this reconsolidation. It was interesting to hear about their school. They said they had six or, six hospital beds in there. I mean, they're really, it's like
Was that Madison Manorville?
No, it was Farmington, maybe Apple Valley, it's on the south, yeah, I can't remember exactly which school, but, so they have a big fabrication lab in there and they have, they have glass walls so all the kids can see and they, the kids kind of choose specialties. It's almost like more of a tech school where they can focus in on certain careers and learn certain things and decide if they like, like for nursing, they can get real life experience and they can do auto mechanics and they do all that at the school.
Do they tie in with any trade schools around there?
Um, I'm not sure about the trade school, but they have like the, the, I don't know what the auto place is, but they actually come in and work with the kids in their shop. So they have a lot of relationships with different groups and they have a lot of industry in the town too, which helps them. So, but they also said, I can look back at my notes, they said they're always open to tours. I thought it'd be interesting to go tour this huge high school, it would be fun to see, you know, what it was like. So, but yeah, they have these different career path, career paths, is that what they call pathways? Instead of whole path, they, they have pathways where you say, I want to do this and then it says, well, you should probably take these six classes and you can kind of export different careers.
Yeah.
So, it's interesting.
Now, last year, I think they had that one that they tied in with some business downtown that kids could work there in the afternoon or something, if that's a career they wanted to get into.
Well, they had, they, instead of having desks like this, they actually have, well, they have a bigger space, but they have more, it's, it feels like an office, like a, a newer office setup. I don't say they're the old cubicles, but they're more workstations and tables and it, it feels like an office. They actually made it be like one of the op, like the headquarters that's nearby. The company donated a whole bunch of stuff and so it's like exactly like a real life work office setting, so the kids can experience all that too.
What is their enrollment then? How many kids are they?
Oh, it was huge. It was huge. It was like they decided, yeah, they were combining and closing schools.
How many thousand?
A lot, I don't, yeah. So.
Wow.
But they did all that, like, in a year and a half. Like, like build the entire addition, I mean, it was like absolutely amazing, so.
We have to hit a sixty-five million?
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to go out.
Okay. Anything else, Ron, Michaeline, you want to throw in there?
I already, you, you weren't here, you missed it.
I gotta record it though. Okay, thank you, I appreciate you guys going, sorry I missed the trip.
Yeah, we missed you.
Yeah. I miss you guys too. Okay, old business items for any discussion and approval. Approval of the calendar, spring break correction?
Yeah, it's one of our, yeah, whoops. The online staff was looking at, at making plans for next year and realized that the spring break for the seventeen eighteen calendar did not cor, coincide with Easter as it typically does. And so that means that we just need to make that move so that both the onsite and the online calendars correspond and Easter is April first. And so it was the, originally on the thirteenth, fourteenth and, twelve, thirteenth and sixteenth is what is currently board approved and I'm asking for it to move it to March twenty-ninth, thirtieth and April second.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Michaeline, second. Second, second with Gary, do further measure?
I'm sorry, I don't know how that happened.
All in favor?
I apologize.
I opposed, thank you. Garage on Grant Street lot.
Okay, Facility Folder does have the quotes for one vendor for the supplies. Once again, this would be for the construction class to build. Another vendor sent an email on Tuesday saying they'd get the quote for those supplies right away and we're still waiting. And two different companies have been asked for a quote for the concrete work and I have not gotten anything from them. Oh, during the meeting, I think one of the teachers must be watching and the vote from the teachers on the first calendar came in and it was sixty-some percent for the tight and thirty-some percent. Thirty-seven for the, the loose and sixty-two for the tight. Okay, thank you.
So just for clarification, a group of teachers developed the loose calendar, but the teachers have voted for the alternate
For the tight.
The tighter one that you
Yeah, the, the, so the small group of teachers working on the, the calendar.
Yeah, that, I'm just trying, I'm trying to remember who was working on who and, and the principals, local principals have worked with you on the tight one, are they aware of what's been proposed or have you?
Yes, they're, they're, they're all aware of what's been proposed.
Okay, thank you.
They have not weighed in though.
Okay. I hope they do.
Yes, yes, on Monday they're going to weigh in.
Okay.
So I will have all of that.
Okay, moving back to the garage.
Sorry.
Kyle Grant, so you said we didn't get all the bids yet?
We didn't get all the bids, however, because second semester has started and as a teacher, Kyle needs to do planning. If we could approve just the construction class building that garage, then he can make those plans. If the board isn't going to approve building a garage there, then he's got to, he's got to know that so he can make alternate plans. So even though we don't have all, you, you can, you can approve the construction of a garage and then have, give the facility committee the say on the, the final layout and final cost. But he needs to know whether or not it's going to be built or not, or whether he has to look for a different project.
I know the board is uncomfortable with giving the facilities committee the authorization to say go with it, this bid, this price, we can bring it back to the board for that part.
Well, there was, you were gone last month, but I brought a question of, is that the right spot for it? You know, and long term, is it the right spot for it?
What was the concern on that? I wasn't here, so I'm just kind of curious.
All the cars are parked in a different location and I know they use one van for that, but we're building a three-car garage or whatever it is. And so they're, you know, everybody's driving over there to, to get into a van then, whereas most of the teachers are either in the elementary school or the high school, the logical choice for me would be where the maintenance guy is over by the, over by the buses or something like that, where we have the other one. And what is our long-term plan for the preschool? Is it to stay there? Is it to, once it's there, the garage's going to be there for a while and we're not going to pay for it to tear it down. So is there a plan for a playground there? Is there, what is the plan for that
Space?
Preschool and lot down the road? I just want to make sure we think of everything prior to building the garage.
Yeah, I did agree, I think Joe raised some good questions at the last meeting and I was trying to remember, when did we discuss demolishing? I know we talked about demoing the house, but I don't remember a discussion of demoing the garage and all of a sudden the garage was done because we could demo it for the same cost or at the same time. And it's like, well, we didn't have that conversation before we demoed it, we should have, so.
It was discussed at Facilities, but I even had to, because you raised a question to me and I even had to go back and try to figure out when that decision was made. And then it was, it was made at a Facilities meeting.
Yeah, but then, yeah, but that wasn't, see, I go back, it's, a lot, you guys talked about a lot of stuff on those Facilities lists that kind of come and go and I looked back through the minutes and I couldn't find it, but I, that's why I contacted you and I still, I didn't find it. So I don't know, was it a year before that or was it just, I didn't see it in minutes, I guess.
Well, I think when we brought it up in the Facility meeting, the question, and I could be wrong, Gary, help me on this, is we asked if they do the house, do we need to get rid of the garage at the same time? And it was brought up that there was some issues with the garage at that time that they felt like it would be the best time to do it, why they were there, it'd be more cost effective. Instead of having to not, you know, if the garage was in good enough shape to keep, is it worth keeping and?
Yeah, but that should have been a full board discussion, I think, because we knew that the house was
We did bring it back to the board as far as when we did the bid on it, we talked about it and somebody asked here, does that include the garage? I thought that was one of the board meetings.
Yeah, but then my, I guess my assumption would have been, we're just going to have a lot and we're going to figure out what we're going to do with it in the future. And that's what Joe was raising, is now we're building a garage? When did, when did we talk about that?
Well, I mean, that was in discussion a while ago as far as what are we going to put there after that's gone? And one of it was, what are we going to do with the stuff that we took out of there? And then the garage thought process came up. Now, if you guys as a whole don't agree to build a garage, then we just make that decision. We hold off until we decide what we're going to do with the space and come up with some ideas.
I think we need to do
That's a board's decision, I mean, we just
I think we need to do the strategic planning first and see what boils out and maybe we decide, you know, we need a huge playground there and it needs to be covered and, you know, the garage doesn't make sense there or maybe the garage does and it's attached to this playground or, you know, we have Lego Robotics that's got stuff in, in a church right now, thank goodness, they're allowing us to use that space, that's not going to last much longer. And where are we going to put Lego Robotics? Is Lego Robotics important? Maybe it isn't, maybe we want to quit the program, but if it is important, it should have space. So I think we need to have those conversations before we just decide to build a garage. Because I don't, I mean, it's, it's a garage, it's not like, or if, what, maybe having more subsidies for the preschool is most important and the twenty thousand dollars that would have went to the garage can go to offset preschool tuition.
How are we getting by now with storing, what would be in the garage?
We've got the storage pod that we purchased that's behind the high school. There's some things that are piled up in the preschool and they're working around them until they get their stuff back. There's, there, we've got stuff stacked as far as parked in the bus barn and that's not best case scenario for a van, you don't want the vans parked in that open bus barn, but that's, there's no other place for them. So they're there. And so we just, we've kind of crammed things into any nook or cranny that we can.
Is the storage pod full?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm just asking.
No, I mean, and it's, as far as getting anything out of there, it's not, it's a storage pod to cram as much stuff in as we could, it's not really to get anything out of there if you want something from the back of the storage pod.
Well, I, I think the student experience is huge value, I can see that. And the building material, or the building would come at a reasonable rate, consider it if you were paying someone to build it. But that, it's a good point about where it's built. And the long-term plans if you were going to tear it down.
And, I mean, we're not taking away an educational plan that was already decided a year ago. This was created an opportunity for students, so it potentially could happen next fall. You know, it could happen at the beginning of a school year as a student project if we figure out a little more details on it. I just, yeah, I just feel like I didn't pay enough attention all along with this.
So you should put it to a vote to, to hold off on?
Well, I don't know, I, how much did the pod cost? How much, maybe we need another, if we need more storage, maybe we need another pod? I don't know what we need.
If you're going to have a class, a construction class build it, it needs to be a spring because you want to teach the techniques first and then the, the building would be the final project because you want them to have the skills before they're building it. And if it's in the fall, they're building it before they have the skills and that's not a, a good situation.
So he's already taught skills before he knew there was going to be building?
It's construction class, so they're, they're just getting into the skills right now, as far as construction. And so as far as, but he's got to know
No matter what he builds, they have
They're going to build something, but he's, he's got to
I, oh, okay, I got it, got it.
Okay, Ron, your input on this?
Well, it would be nice to have a place for the vans to sit protected. And if we, if they're used by both schools, I don't see that it's much difference where, where they're stored, you know, because it's not like we're miles apart here. And I think we discussed last time that we still have the whole front of that, a lot if we want to add on to the building or if we want a playground out there or what. So I don't think we're losing much there. And then we need storage for stuff from the ECFV building there, which I think is what they planned for one of the bays. So I, I would be in favor of doing it, but I can understand where you like to plan for everything in advance, but we need to have a place for this stuff, so.
You got a pod, you know, for now.
That doesn't cover up vans.
Where the vans going now?
Is it, is it today? I mean, are they?
They can't be sitting out in the open.
Well, I, I can see that, we're probably not going to come to an agreement on it.
The funds
I mean, we, go ahead.
The funds for this then, where there, and I'm not up to date on that, it, it's available, it's, it's, I mean, are, is it stressing anything or as far as the construction cost and material, is that whatever spot that's coming out of the checkbook?
Well, you know, that's when?
Uh, yeah, so are they readily available, it's not cramping anything else or being taken from something else or?
It
How long?
No, it's
We have revenue from the other project, correct, Quinn? The big project that we did?
The UNESCO project?
Yeah. We have some
Contingency funds.
Contingency funds that we have available to us in that project that we were going to utilize for this. So is it coming out of anything specific?
Yeah, is it just
Can it be used for other things? I don't know, that would be, we have
Capital.
Yeah, so.
What other building projects would Mr. Kaler, what has he done in the past?
He would build, he would probably build a, a garage.
For somebody, maybe?
Yep.
Didn't he do the gazebo?
Yes.
We built a garage once for somebody in town at one time.
The garage sitting on the, the, there's a lot with just a garage on it, right kitty corner from the school, that was lot, that was constructed by an industrial type class. So there, he would probably So there, he would probably build the garage here and then put it on skids and transport it to whomever buys it.
In the past, they've built a couple of buildings for Hoda and Crin.
So it's not, so there are alternative projects for him and this one?
It's just I wanna be able to let him know what's in.
So the next question I would have, if, and it sounds like we wanna, the majority of the people are, have, would like to talk more about this before it comes about, would it be feasible for him to build a pod-type shed for us to have? To utilize, to store stuff in? And then?
And where would he build that?
If we were gonna get another pod, we had to put it somewhere. If that was the case, it would've brought up here. Or if we were to build, building to store stuff in with a floor and, you know, maybe utilize it for a year or so and then sell it later. I'm just throwing ideas out there.
A portable?
Yeah, a portable, I mean, if you have it on.
Skids?
Skids, you could move it anywhere. You know, you could build it next to this garage down this end of the building and we just enclose it where it's, you know, they can store stuff in it to keep it dry, but have access to the back and the front a little more than a pod with this, you know, sealed door. And maybe the, you know, twofold, they get something to build and we have something to use. Yeah, back, Brown went back here, they built. I mean, I'm just, just some thoughts, I've, you know, built it.
Well, it sounds like there's a demonstrated need for the storage for both materials and the van. And I think Rick Bartz is okay with it, isn't he?
Oh, with building it by the preschool?
Yeah.
Yeah, because he's landlord.
Right. So I, I think it's a project that should move forward.
So we need to vote on it and determine if we go forward with it or continue the conversation.
Well, move that Kyle Beaufort tries to build a garage.
Okay, we have a motion to build a garage.
What size?
Do we have the plans?
He's saying as proposed.
As proposed.
Concrete foundation, three-car. On, on the Grand Street location.
It's on the facilities, so.
Okay, a motion. Hold a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion?
I'm not against doing it, I just think it's the wrong time. I think we need to think about it more, we need to analyze it. We might need a four-car garage or five-car garage. We might need a two-car garage. I just don't feel like we know exactly what we need. And we're rushing and I don't think that's good.
I, I placed the second so that we could act on it, but.
I agree with you.
I agree.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Jimmy, should I say anything to you guys? Is that allowed? Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so.
Can I get that final vote score? I couldn't see everybody's face, was it?
One, two, three, four, five, no's, two, yes.
Thank you. I will let Kyle know.
Proposed easement.
Can I bring up one, well, is facility committee on the, it's for general later?
We have another meeting.
Just in general with the facility committee? I, I wasn't at the last meeting either, so I went back and looked at the notes. And there was some discussion about the signage. So then I went and looked at the facility committee notes and it sounded like, it said something like the honor society was gonna review signage and then bring their proposals back to the facility committee. And I just wanna make sure that that's came to the board as a whole before. So I just wanna make sure that the stuff isn't just, that it comes to the board as a whole. Because I don't, I, there's certain things, I don't know what to tell you what I care about and don't care about. I don't know what that line is, but if we're tearing down a building or building a new building, I care. You know, if we have to fix a water heater or something like that, I, I don't. But the signage, I think, is something that needs to come to the board as a whole for a vote. So I just wanna make sure that that comes back.
Oh, it will.
It will.
Facilities committee will be the first point.
Okay. I just, I feel like sometimes, like with this, that the direct, it's, it's almost all, like your committee is working so well that decisions are being made and sometimes the board is unaware of what's happening. And I mean, it's just, your committee is working well, but we're having a hard time keeping up.
That's fine.
If that makes sense.
No.
Cause we're not involved in all the discussions and sometimes we don't have the context or we miss a meeting or something like that and don't know what's going on.
We'll just make sure that we're clear on our discussions that we have at the meeting to make sure you guys don't have any questions.
Cause I appreciate what you guys do. I mean, I don't, I, I know you guys are accomplishing a lot, but there's a certain level in there where I just, I wanna kinda know what's going on before the signs go up, sort of thing. Thank you.
You got a problem?
Is there any reason to discuss doing a portable storage facility? Spending some of that money, I don't know what that would cost.
It's another discussion, I guess, you know, cause that's probably the cost. I mean, I think it would be a vanity, I don't know where you put it though.
Right where the garage is going.
Yeah.
A portable one's fine. You brought up the idea of it.
I mean, if you need the storage space, that would at least give us some temporary storage space and we could always move it someplace else.
We can bring it up with, ask them what it would, like a 10 by 10? You know, is it a potential building for them? You wanna address that with me, Crin?
Sure.
Or 12 by 12? You know, I know what you need.
12 by 20?
12, you know, something that you need. You can put it on skids. Well, you wanna check out if you're gonna put it on skids? I'm assuming that the city may have some rules on that.
Yes.
You know, the dimensions. There may be some limitations on that. So we would check with those first before we come up with a size. Then we can set up to have a meeting. Okay, potential easement or potential problem?
This is just going to stay on the agenda until we get the, the, until she gets the letter from the DNR at the last meeting. Mimi requested that all business stay there until we act on it. So that's why this can just be held over.
Okay, new business items for discussion approval, policies for the first reading? Everybody knows it's a first reading, I don't, is there anything that we need to? No, Mike, Eene, Ron?
I haven't looked at them. Anne, were there a lot of, were there any changes? Were there major changes on any of them?
No, not really. Some of the later ones we added were simply because the extension for Team of our nest for District 504 Coordinator has changed. So we had to update that within policies. So it's just simply from 1309 to 9,000, whatever is the only change.
Okay, so everybody get a chance to look them over? Discuss next, announcements, important events, breakfast?
Legislative breakfast, no one responded to Anne, so no one is registered for that? Is that, cause I can't, I'm going to be in Winona all day. Judging a one act contest, so.
Should we have someone there?
We have in the past.
We have in the past.
I mean, it's this Saturday?
It's this Saturday. When is registration?
Can I be late registration?
Is it Saturday or tomorrow?
I can check into a late registration, the registration closes on Wednesday, but usually.
Today's the third. Is that on Rochester?
Yes.
Second. Oh, it's in Rochester.
It's in Rochester.
Yeah, I just, I can't.
What is the board's feeling? Should we have someone there? I mean, I, if it's, if you feel it's important, I, I can make a point to be there if it's.
I can also get an update from, I know some other superintendents and board members from other schools who are going to be in attendance and I can get a recap from them.
You said Jeremy Miller is the only one going, right?
Jeremy Miller will be there, Greg Davis won't show again.
Never does.
Do we bring anything up to them or gain anything from that? Or is it more or less a meet and greet?
Well, we can bring things up.
Typically what happens, there are different presentations for the legislatures, legislators in attendance. Last year, a panel talked about the early kindergarten preschool funding. Another group talked about the long-term facility maintenance money and then the equalizing the, the burden of taxes for the rural area. And there's two different types of funding there that could mitigate some of the, the burden for farmers.
They discussed testing.
Yes.
That was the other topic that came up. And so it's, so, I mean, if there are issues that we feel that are important, we can send a letter, I've done that oftentimes too. But sometimes if.
Throughout the year.
You know, being aware of what's, you know, coming up and who to contact, it's worth doing that. I've done that in the past from the MSBA and MREA alerts that we get. We haven't as a board, I think, said that you can, as an individual board member.
And it's, it's, cause personally, the one thing that, one of the things that I feel they need to know is that every year, the discrepancy between what is funded in special education and what we have to cover from our general fund to address the special education concerns is that gap is getting bigger and bigger. And so on special education, they're predicting by 2019, 2018? That special education is going to be underfunded by 719 million. So that means across the state, schools from the general fund are going to have to cough up that 719 million dollars to address the shortfall from the special ed funding. And that, it's, it's getting to be too much.
What time is the meeting, sir?
Um, I think it's 2:30.
It's a breakfast.
Do you wanna just see if it's available for late registration? Then that would give us a yes or no as far as if it's even possible.
I'll be an email contact with you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on that?
The negotiation seminar from MSBA, no one, I, I think it's going to be the day before the Valentine luncheon, so what, what day?
11th, 10th.
10th, February 10th in Rochester, which doesn't work for any of us.
That's a Friday.
But there, there is a Saturday in St. Peter, March 11th. For those, for those that are negotiating, so it means the three tanyaques in the corner.
March 11th?
March 11th on a Saturday.
Saturday?
Saturday. So if you.
Saturday, March 11th?
If you want to go.
Negotiate here.
March 11th.
Where?
St. Peter Gate.
Do you wanna go to that?
It's just over by Manateo.
I know, I've been there.
What would this be?
Joe, when we go there last time?
What was that meeting we went to?
Superintendent evaluation.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right, they had those good sandwiches.
Worth the drive.
Yeah, it's worth the drive.
So let me know if you want us to register for that.
You wanna go there?
Yeah, we can put our name on it.
Put ours down.
Okay. You gonna send us an email on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Where are we on negotiations or are you negotiating at this point?
We've got a lot coming up. Have we got any letters?
We won't get any letters until April.
Probably till April.
But then the, let's see, the professional group, the confidential supervisory, the teachers, the principals, and the bus drivers are all due this year.
Is that all?
Yeah, that's it.
That's it, all but like one or two groups?
Yeah, we don't have to do Local 70 and you don't have to do the superintendent contract.
My goodness, it's out my ear.
You ready, Joe?
And then the other thing, as far as superintendent feedback on the feedback form online, someone anonymously, because they didn't put in their name or email address, but they filled out the form and they said they really enjoyed reading the article on Josh Nerline, the new board member. And they really felt that each board member should be highlighted. And so they were suggesting that each board member, like, take a month to be highlighted. And if you've gone to our webpage, you'll see, thank you very much.
I'm done.
Josh wrote that.
Josh wrote that, yeah, you did that, didn't you, Josh?
Josh wrote that.
Thanks for raising the bar, buddy.
Just change your name and put somebody else on it.
There we go.
Look at that.
Very nicely done.
We did send, Becky Parabak did send Josh a list of questions. And he used those and, and wrote a very well-done article.
Yeah, she had so many options, very, she made it as easy as possible and some guidelines or hints to.
So just kind of expect that to be coming your way.
My oldest mom said she thought that was pretty cool.
Do you have any other updates or anything else? We have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Joe, second by Ron. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you, people. For the president.
Do you want to?